Seven o'clock, the meeting will come to order. I'm Grace Lusbrance, Cascade Supervisor. Works later, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
McDonald.
Here.
Supervisor Lusbrance.
Here.
Treasurer Pierce. Treasurer Pierce. Trustee Kessel.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Yo.
Kirk Slater.
Please rise if possible for the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there a motion or discussion for approval of tonight's agenda?
Shipley makes a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
I'd just like to add, there was a a couple errors, or at least one error in the packet. It's been addressed, but the date on the proposed resolution for the fire station bonding was incorrect. So with that, that's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve tonight's agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Supported by trustee Nordhook to approve tonight's agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. We have no presentations tonight, so Article Five, we're at public comments. Please come to the podium if you're able, otherwise Ms. Brock can bring the microphone to you. State your name and address for our record keeping and try to limit your comments to three minutes. Welcome, Mr. Strauss.
Thank you. Paul Strauss, 7474 Alaska Ridge. Good evening. I'd just like to respond to comments that were made at the last board meeting regarding the Alaska Broadband Project. A resident stated he had to solve his own internet problem by paying $2,800 to bring it across the street and that he didn't come to the township for help. He cautioned you to be careful opening that door for Alaska because people like himself might become irritated and even find it offensive. Well, I gotta tell you, when I was listening to that the next day at home via cellular data on my iPad, I became a little bit irritated. But then I realized that he must not be aware that one of the statutory eligible uses of these federal funds is investing in broadband projects designed to provide service to unserved or underserved households. If it were as simple as bringing it across the street, we'd have all had internet a long time ago. The only reason we came to the township for help is because we knew that the federal government was going to give the township over $2 million in COVID funds and that expanding broadband infrastructure was a specific eligible and expected use of these funds. The board unanimously approved the Alaska Broadband Project. And that alone says a lot. But the Treasury Department publishes a document called the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. It's the final rule on how these funds are to be spent. It's over 400 pages long, somewhat broad, but there's a simple litmus test to help you determine how these funds should be used. Just ask yourselves, if there was another lockdown, how could we best help the Cascade community? Well, during the lockdown, how did we work from home? How did our kids go to school? How did we consult with our doctors? How did we go to these board meetings? The internet. As the pandemic has made clear, access to broadband has itself become essential for individuals and businesses to participate in education, commerce, work, civic matters, and receive healthcare and social services. Essential. Those aren't my words, those are the federal government's words regarding these funds. In fact, that same document mentions the word broadband over 200 times, more than any other eligible use. So while my fellow resident cautioned you to be careful opening that door, I would like to encourage you to open that door, not just to Alaska, but any and all pockets of Cascade that are unserved or underserved with broadband internet. Because that's what the government expects you to do. Just remember, Alaska asks first.
Thank you.
I'm Kathy Taylor, I live at 6027 Champagne Court. And I'm here because I noticed on the agenda, consider Burton Street pedestrian bridge project. And I would just like to say that I consider that to be a colossal waste of taxpayer dollars. We completed four of the new trails, and I know that from experience and looking at them, two of them are never used. I go by in a car bicycles year round, the ones that were put on Cascade Road, those two sections. And the one up at Spalding goes nowhere. We got on that one time on our bicycles and ended up out on Cascade Road. It just dead-ended. I've seen in an entire year, one person using that. And then the one down at Burton that goes to 28th Street, that one, I've seen three people in a year use that one. And I'm really almost sorry, you know, and I was on the committee that, you know, we created the whole new trail system. And I just don't think that a bridge to nowhere, I don't know of anybody clamoring to get across the expressway to Patterson, to a rickety old sidewalk to go somewhere. I mean, I don't think, you know, I just don't think that that's a good thing to do. And I've noticed that a lot of people come out Burton to the light there at Cascade Road, and they don't use that trail, the new one that goes to the right. They cross over and use the original trail. And I just also want to say that the original trails that are out there, they look like they should be outside of an abandoned town. You know, they're dilapidated with weeds growing all over them. And I've heard so much through the years bloviating about, you know, the Cascade and the village look and our image. Those old dilapidated trails do a lot more to say something about Cascade, you know, than anything that looks bad or something in the village. And I really hope that those dollars, instead of wasting them on a bridge to nowhere, can be used to replace sections of the trail, the older trails that are in there, because they're horrible looking. Pretty soon, you're just going to have to mow them. And they're not safe in a lot of spaces, so I just wanted to comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Taylor, 6027 Champagne Court, Cascade. I just want to kind of expand a little bit on what Kathy said, as far as the bridge to nowhere. And she's absolutely right. It's an absolute waste of money. We both were on the committee for the new trail system. And the proposed pedestrian bridge over the expressway at 96 was way down on the priority list. And it actually only came up one notch. We could not, in good conscience, spend a lot of money on Thornapple between Cascade and Thornhill. If you know where that is, very scenic and whatnot. This was back in 217, and the price tag on that was well over $3 million. And we just said, that can't be done. So then came the bridge to nowhere. And working with Steve Peterson, you all know who that was, made a comment that the road commission was going to repave that section of road. And that in doing so, they would help us out with about 60% of the cost of putting the pedestrian bridge over that expressway. And so we asked him, what would be our portion of that cost? And he said about $350,000. Fast forward to 222, we're talking our portion of that somewhere, and I heard a figure of 800,000. That's too light. And it's going to cost us well over $1 million. And that's just money wasted. If you guys want to do something right, take that money, do things. Take the money and, as Kathy said, fix the existing trail system. They suck. I don't know how else to say it. And/or look at putting a pedestrian walkway over the Thornapple. Because then you would be connecting two huge neighborhoods that are divided by the river. Putting something over the expressway, it's beyond belief. And I will do every, I mean, if this persists, if you're going to take this to votes and advise the public and whatnot, I will do everything in my power to fight you. Because it's downright stupid. And we were on a committee. So I would say that, oh, my time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Wendy Sturm, and I live in the Greenleaf Woods area. And I would just like to say I'm all for maintaining our existing trails, making them safe so that they're not uneven, which is a trip hazard. It's really important that they're not overgrown with weeds. And I love connecting the trails. I think that's such a great goal. And I adore the connection between Burton Street and 28th Street, and I use it a lot. And my neighbor runs it almost every day, just so you know. And there are a lot of paths that go through there. And I mean it, I have to step aside for folks, not all the time, but enough of the time that I can confidently say I support that. And I would love to see a connection rather than a bridge I don't really know enough to speak about, but a connection between Burton Street and 28th Street along Craft. That would create a four-mile continuous trail for walking and biking without the need to cross dangerous roads. And I think that would be a really worthwhile extension of our trail system, and I would look for opportunities like that where our folks are living in utilizing those trails and walkways. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment in person? Do we have anyone virtually?
Sorry, I'm not using my usual mic. Scott Van Sulkema, I'm going to allow a talk. Scott?
Hello, Scott Van Sulkema, 2570. And yes, I've also, I agree with Kathy, I've been saying that the, you know, the trails that we have now, they're great, but they really need to be updated and upgraded. I mean, I was here when we first got the original one on Cascade Road. Also, the bridge, it's not going to anywhere, it's going to Kentwood. Have we looked at seeing if Kentwood would want to chip in on this? Because it would really benefit their citizens to get tied into our already existing trail system. If you can work at that and have Kentwood throw half the money in, or what have you, then that makes sense. Also, the last woman that spoke, that connector on Craft down Burton to 28th Street, again, that's a great spot for that, I totally agree with that. There's already the existing infrastructure on 28th Street with the sidewalks. And people like, for some odd reason, walking around in a loop, so they're not repeating their traffic, so. That's all I have to say, but thank you, and I'm glad that we're addressing the trail system to hopefully get hopefully fixed before we start adding more to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any, are there any other Zoom participants who would like to speak during this public comment? Please raise your hand. Oh, I see one, Scott Rissy.
Yes, hi, Scott Rissy, 7238 Cascade Road. Regarding the trail and the bridge connector to Kentwood, I would agree that I don't think that's appropriate thing for us to focus on. I'd frankly like to see the township work to extend the trails more to the south. You know, we really don't have any trails south of 36th Street, and that's about the middle of the township. I think we have a lot of people that live to the south that would like to be connected. If we're gonna try and cross highways, maybe we should look at Thornapple River Drive by the park or Whitneyville, you know, at 96 and Whitneyville Road. I think that inevitably in the future, we're going to need to work in that direction. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else on Zoom? It looks like everyone has spoken who wants to.
Okay, that'll conclude this portion of public comments. Next, Article Six, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Is there a discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve, support, or ship with?
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying? Article Seven and Eight, we have no financial actions or unfinished business tonight. So that will move us to new business, Article Nine. First, 011-2022 Oak Wilt Management Bids. And I think I saw, yep, Ms. Wani and Mr. Engel, both members of our Parks Committee are here tonight to answer any questions, and also they have volunteered a lot of their time and knowledge on behalf of Cascade. We really appreciate that. Mr. Swayze?
Great, thank you. And I'd invite Joe and Jenny up to the podium as well, so if there's any questions, you guys will be able to answer it, and our residents on Zoom will be able to hear as well. So we did get a presentation from Jenny a couple meetings ago, but just to recap, in 2021, a potential oak wilt infected tree was discovered in Burton Park. So for those of you that may be unaware, oak wilt is a fungus that takes over the sapwood of the red oak tree and prevents water from getting to the leaves. The disease causes the leaves to wilt, browning starts at the margins of the leaves, and the leaves will fall in the summer months. So it's an invasive fungus, it can kill a fully grown red oak tree in just a few weeks. So in terms of our oak wilt issue in Burton Park, the timeline was that sometime in 2020, unbeknownst to us, we had run red oak die rapidly in the western area of the park. So in September of 2021, an additional red oak was observed with oak wilt symptoms adjacent to the 2020 tree. An additional three-trunk red oak with symptoms in the east central area of the park. So in late October, West Michigan Tree collected samples from the three-trunk red oak in the east central area of the park, designated as Site Number Two, and that was submitted to the Michigan State Diagnostic Lab. In November of 2021, Julie, I'm going to butcher her last name, Steckkecky?
I can't do it either.
Collected bore samples from the two red oaks in the western area, which is Site Number One, and submitted those to the MSU Diagnostic Lab. And oak wilt management strategies were discussed with our Billings and Grounds Supervisor Jim McDonald in the field. And then in November 21, the lab results came back, and all three red oaks, the two in Site One and the one in Site Two tested positive for oak wilt. So for Burton Park, our main goal is to prevent oak wilt from spreading to other red oak trees in the park and in the neighborhoods. We'll note that especially Site Number One is adjacent to a residential area that has potential oak trees that could be infected as well. So our oak wilt management plan, which is included in the packet, was created by a state-certified oak wilt consultant. I'll just refer to her as Julie now. So the management plan includes trenching because red oak trees co-mingle their roots, and a roof graft disruption between infected and non-symptomatic red oaks break up their roots to ensure that the fungus doesn't transfer to additional trees. There's specialized equipment that's used in the trenching process, and it follows a mathematical formula to determine the trench boundaries. So one of our plan's goals is to try to remove as few of the trees as possible, especially those that are not red oaks in the infected zone. But non-symptomatic red oats in the infected zone will have to be removed. So to accomplish this, an RFP, a request for proposals, was issued for the removal of the red oak trees in the infection area. So the RFP originally called for the trees to be removed prior to March 1st. However, we found out that there really wasn't capacity in the industry to complete the work within that timeframe because we didn't get any reasonable bids back. So we reissued the RFP with a timeframe of after November 1, 2022. The work can't occur between March 15 and October 31st because that's the time period when the fungus can be actively spread to other red oak trees. So in your packet, I included a couple items, the matrix of oak wilt management RFP bid amounts, the actual bids that we received back, and as well as the oak wilt management presentation from our consultant. So we put together a working group consisting of Park Committee members, Jenny Wante and Joe Engel, Billings and Grounds Supervisor Jim McDonald, our consultant Julie, and myself. And we met in February to review the proposed bids. I will say the group was concerned about the wide range of bids. If you went through the packet, you noticed that they ranged from 34,000 all the way up to 165,000. And the worry was if the contractors fully understood the scope of the services. In particular, the evaluation group is concerned with target trees being removed in a way that would limit damage to the existing area and non-target trees. While there's a significant amount of red oaks in the area that are being removed, there is quite a few non-target trees as well. And we want to make sure the company that comes in takes due care and diligence to make sure that the non-red oak trees aren't damaged. Otherwise, we're just going to have a clear-cut section of our township park. So after careful consideration, the evaluation group is recommending the township board accept the bid from Woodland Tree Service. So they're not the lowest bid. Woodland Tree Services' bid was just over 60,000, while the lowest bid was 33,635. The group felt that Woodland was better positioned and better understood the need to protect the surrounding environment, including the non-targeted trees when completing the work. The company also came highly recommended from our township oak wilt consultant. So if it's approved by the township board, the work's going to occur after November 1, 2022. The township, thanks to committee member Engel, has negotiated an access agreement with a private homeowner that will allow easier access to the oak wilt infection site, saving us some costs not having to drag equipment all the way through our park as well. And then, of course, we will restore that access area when the project is finished. So the project will be managed by the Billings and Grounds Supervisor Jim McDonald with assistance from our township oak wilt consultant and our trustee park committee members as well. So we'll say the proposed work was not included in the fiscal year 2022 prepared budget. And as such, we'll have to make a budget amendment if the bid is approved. The funding for the oak wilt management project can come from the Township Open Space Fund. That fund currently has a fund balance of approximately $800,000. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. If you have questions about oak wilt specifically, I would send them to Jenny because she is the subject asked expert on that.
I have a question. Has anybody done a study going back three to five years of what this company has done, and if there's been any reinvestation after they've done their $60,000 or whatever the work?
Julie, the consultant, has worked with them extensively, and so it was based on her recommendation working with them. In fact, when we first started receiving bids, I was in that first one of that really exciting high number that knocked my socks off. I said to Julie, well, how are we going to evaluate whether, you know, this is a good bid or a bad? And she said, let's wait to see what Woodland does. I totally, I've worked with them so much, I totally trust what their numbers are going to be. So we could certainly get you examples of what they have done on the other side of the state, but not.
I just want to know if there's any reinfection in the areas that they've cleaned out.
Okay, the, back up. So there's a mathematical formula, this is probably more than you ever wanted to know about oak wilt.
The community is going to learn about oak wilt by the time this process is over.
It's called the broom model, and the consultant, I watched her do this. So she does a measurement of the infected tree, and then based on this mathematical algorithm, that's how she figures how far the trenching has to go. And then she has tagged trees that need to be removed, and then she's also tagged trees that are a little past the edge just so we can keep an eye on them, because there is, because I asked her once, is there like some scientific formula that says oak wilt travels, you know, .5 feet in a year? And she said, no, no one's done that kind of research. So they've been very successful with the broom model of measuring the diameter of the infected trees and going out from there. But we will be watching very carefully to see. But it's really more the trenching and disconnecting the roots than it is actually taking the trees down. And we just started the trenching last week at Site Two, and the folks who are hiring to do the trenching at Site One is starting next week, I believe? Tuesday. Did I cut answer your question?
Somewhat. I guess what I want to know is, five years ago, this company did a oak wilt project in a forest somewhere. Are they being called back two, three, four years later to do oak wilt work again for another $60,000, $65,000 in that area of that oak wilt?
I guess the one thing I would comment is that the contractors are only removing the trees that that we are specifically telling them to remove through the consultant process. So I understand where you're coming from, but I think it's probably directed better at the consultants than at the
Okay. tree removal company.
And she is employed by who?
She is an oak wilt consultant, she's an arborist through the state, and they, the State Arborist Society has a list of certified consultants, and based on Heidi Frye, who's the State Parks Health or a specialist for the DNR. I called her when we first had the oak wilt positive and said, who should we hire? And she went, helped me to the list and recommended two people, and we picked Julie.
And did either of the other two companies, did Julie know anything, or does she have any experience with the other two?
Yeah, she had experience, but yeah.
She still wanted this one?
She's still, yeah.
Trustee Shipley?
It's my turn, Timmy, so you just stand fast. Okay. First of all, this township has always taken an aggressive stance against that nasty little silkwork that has devastated the canopies throughout Michigan, and we've been successful. We've heard from the residents that they like their canopies. And I'm afraid that if we drag our feet on this, we're going to end up with it out of control. Plant fungus, I'm not an arborist, so I don't know much about it. So I pass my torch off to somebody that does know. And if the state arborist or the consultant is making recommendation for this company based upon past practices, I'd say that I'd throw my nickel that way.
I'm a little bit of a sleeper here. I carried a commercial pest control operator's license for several years and have taken several continuing ed courses on oak wilt. So I've seen what's happened up in Manastee National Forest and et cetera, but this is why my concern is, if I'm going to spend this kind of money now, am I going to be spending it again in two years or four years? That's my concern.
Well, and we'll also need to figure out a plan going forward that we get some inspection going with a forester or an arborist so someone can help us. So we're just not surprised, you know, because no one's looking at trees.
There's a potential for a lot of this fungus to be in people's backyard, and they don't recognize it.
Yeah. Ottawa County has a huge problem with oak wilt, and I just talked to their natural resource supervisor last week, and Ottawa County Park says 7,000 acres. And they are doing nothing with oak wilt, because it's just too expensive. It's just gotten out of the box, and they can't, so they're just ignoring it. Which just breaks my heart.
Did Julie have, Timmy's asking if there was a problem with the company that she recommended. Did she have specific reason for not recommending the others to you guys when she talked? Had she experienced problems with some of the lower bids?
She never worked with West Michigan before, as I understand it. She was not familiar with them in this particular area. And that is a remediation of oak wilt. So there was no familiarity with that. I don't recall partial, which was the 100 and whatever thousand dollar bid. I don't believe she'd worked with them, but she was familiar with them. That's my memory.
Okay, thank you.
The dollar amounts get a lot closer with if they throw in that large oak tree, correct, removal?
Yeah, they did. They were, they had originally made Site One and Site Two separate bids, and we asked them to include them all in the first bid for Site One, which they did. Just to expand on that, too. So, you know, all of the, or shouldn't say all of the, but one of the companies that was onsite when we were onsite as well was West Michigan Tree. And they actually did not bid on this project to start out with, for whatever reason. And we enticed them to put a bid in. But as I understand it, I was not onsite, so I got this information secondhand from the people that were. But they, multiple people just got a feeling that while they understood the idea was to protect the non-target trees through the process, that their process was going to be more of a clear-cutting process. And it's more of what's in their wheelhouse of what they've done in the past. So really, the concern was that we bring in this company and all of a sudden they're bumping into other trees, they're not taking good care. Whereas Julie had worked specifically with the recommended company. And she was confident that they were going to take the due diligence that we are expecting in this project.
Really appreciate all your work on this. Jim McDonald, you guys have done a great job.
I have to say kudos to Jim, too. He's done a great job working with us and working with the landowners to move this forward. It's been wonderful.
On government time, this has been like light years. Is there any questions or more discussion or emotion?
I'll make a motion to go forward with the RFP as Ben recommends.
I'll support that.
And that would be for Woodland?
Yes.
So that's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the RFP for Woodland for the oak wilt management bid. Kurt Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Castle?
Yes.
Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Treasure Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook?
No.
Slater?
Yes.
Supervisor Lusprance?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Lusprance, I just want to interrupt. I had a comment from one of our Zoom participants that the board cannot be heard, and I can hear you. If you could just move your microphones closer. I don't know what else to do. I just said I would help, so thanks. Sorry.
Next item zero, one, two, twenty twenty-two, the Burton Street Pedestrian Bridge Project. Manager Swayze, this is.
Great, thank you. So in two thousand eighteen, the Township and the Road Commission partnered to pursue a grant funding for the Burton Street Pathway Extension and Bridge over I ninety-six. So concurrently, at the recommendation of the Citizens Pathway Ad-Hoc Committee, the township placed a millage question on the ballot to extend at a reduced rate the pathway millage for ten years. The millage was to be utilized for ten different pathway extension projects in the township, including the one we're talking about today, and provide for ongoing maintenance of the system. So at the time of the grant application, the millage proposal, the estimate for the project was between one point nine and two point one million dollars. The TAP grant was awarded at one point two nine million dollars with the township pathway funds contributing the rest. So in mid-two thousand twenty-one, the project cost had increased to three to three point two million dollars. So the reasons for that project escalation included poor soil conditions requiring a significant amount of additional piles, which are steel beams for the project, in addition for the need to preload the project, project site to combat the settlement, the need for additional retaining wall length and height on the west side of the project due to a private property owner unwilling to provide temporary grading easements on the property, and then unanticipated accelerated construction and material costs due to inflation and supply chain management issues. So due to the escalated costs in mid-two thousand twenty-one, the township board voted to stop the project. Recently, M dot staff and Kent County Road Commission staff had had further discussions about the cost of the project. And those discussions resulted in the, in two opportunities for the project to move forward if the township board so chooses at the cost originally anticipated. So the first is that the project could be combined with the Burton Street Bridge redecking project, which is currently anticipated for two thousand twenty-three. So this would help with significant traffic control costs, which would be absorbed by the M dot project rather than provided by the separate project. And then the M dot TAP program, which is the grant program that we utilize for the project, would contribute additional grant funds so that the township contribution for the construction project wouldn't exceed the eight hundred thousand dollars anticipated in the original grant application. So I included a couple items in the packet for your review. There's a memo that was reviewed by the board back in August, the same memo, prepared by Fishback outlining the cost escalation issues. So there's a project cost estimate prepared by Fishback if M dot takes the traffic control responsibilities and costs. You can see that knocks it down to about three million dollars. And then the original millage approval report and recommendation to the township board from the Citizens Pathway Ad-Hoc Committee, that packet appeared in the township packet back when the original resolution was approved to put the the millage question on the ballot. And that report does have the Citizens Ad-Hoc Committee report in it. So the partnership with M dots provided a unique opportunity to move the project forward at the originally anticipated cost of the township. M dot recognized the regional impact of the connection and the benefit it provides not only to Cascade residents, but the regional population as well. The one point three million dollar TAP grant was all already the largest that the Road Commission had seen through this program for the area. So it would be a significant amount of dollars as well as M dot picking up the traffic control costs. So this is a.
What are those?
What's that?
Combining road closure costs?
About two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the reason this is coming in front of you now is M di is beginning the development of their bridge preservation project yet this month. They need an indication from Cascade or the Road Commission whether or not to include the pedestrian bridge project in the bidding plans. So if the township does choose to participate, the project would be bid this fall and constructed during two thousand twenty-three. So the ten-year budget projection for the pathway fund includes the township portion of funding for the project, so the monies are available. And if it's approved by the township board, the township portion of the funding for the project would be included in our two thousand twenty-three budget presentation. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Tonight, we're looking for the board to provide directions to the township staff and the Road Commission on the Burton Street Pedestrian Bridge Project.
Was this memo, June eleventh, twenty twenty-one, from Fishback to Steve Peterson, given to the board or discussed at a board meeting?
Yeah, so that was given to the board at the meeting where the board stopped the project in August.
Ben, how, you know, we, we thought the project would be a good project because we could get the grant. It would connect two districts. It would connect the Patterson Ice Arena, the YMCA MVP recreational facilities. Most importantly, I remember a lot of the discussions we had over the years was the safety issue. Because it's, there's absolutely zero places for pedestrians to cross now. How, I guess the real question is, how, how can we guarantee that it wouldn't exceed eight hundred thousand dollars? Because we were at that point, then it exceeded, then we killed the project, and it's kept escalating. And now we're back down to this eight hundred thousand where it had gone way beyond that. So how, how could, would they sign something that will guarantee us that?
I guess I would say the opposite is that if that's the board wanted to do, we would provide documentation to M dot that, you know, we're not absolutely, absolutely not spending a dollar over eight hundred thousand, a thousand dollars, that that's what's authorized. And then they would have to decide whether or not to move the project forward.
Okay, because it said in the analysis that and, 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 uh, near the bottom, the TAP program would contribute additional grant funds so that the township contribution construction project would not exceed eight hundred thousand dollars anticipated in the original grant application. My concern would be that it would exceed that. If it wouldn't, then I would be very, I'd support it for all the reasons we thought about over the years. But, so that would be up to us to put the onus on that cap.
Sorry, I'm sorry, trustee Shipley.
Thank you. I agree with, with Tom is, I'm concerned, Tom, because we saw the last consideration escalate to spiral right out of control. More importantly than that is that we've heard numerous times from numerous residents on both sides of the river, that their number one concern in the pathways is getting across Cascade, getting across the river at Cascade Road. We talked about investigating, getting some grant money from the DNR or other sources to help with that project. We heard from numerous residents, including Mr. and Mrs. Taylor, about the condition of our pathways. And we saw what some of our neighboring municipalities have done to keep their pathways in nice condition. For instance, entire length long A to drive has been replaced this past year. From my opinion, based upon what Tom's considerations are and considerations of the residents, once again, I got to say that this project should be ignored, and we should address the concerns of the citizens. That's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Trustee Nordhook?
I don't think this is the time to be talking about this. We killed it one other time due to cost. It's back at eight hundred thousand dollars. We have a strategic plan that's about to be finished. I'd like to hear from the residents through that strategic plan what projects they want. And this board made a promise to the Taylors and community that we would send out postcards for anything over five hundred thousand. Here we are at eight hundred thousand, and I didn't get a postcard. That's my comment. I don't want this bridge.
Why isn't the township engineer here tonight, Manager Swayze? This is from a board's members' perspective. This has been out here forever, and all of a sudden now, like just lingering, we said, no, the cost. And all of a sudden now, we're, it's, it's on the agenda for Friday. We have four days all of a sudden. And my discussions or my understanding was, we need to decide tonight whether or not to approve this. If the engineer had this information for months, how about showing up to a meeting and telling us that so that we're not put in a position where we've got a gun to our head and the public is, there was plenty of time for us to reach out to the public to know that this was coming. And now all of a sudden, this put it on the agenda and spring it on the board, which in turn is then springing on residents. That's not a way to make decisions under pressure like that. And I think it's premature, especially when we've literally just wrapped up our strategic plan and our parks plan, and we're analyzing that information. And initially overwhelmingly, the people want connectivity at the village, at the center area. So that, I don't appreciate the engineer putting it on the board with four days' notice for us to make a decision when we could have reached out to the public over multiple months.
So the engineer hasn't been involved in the conversation about the funding from the state? And really, it's a question of opportunity, right? So the opportunity presented itself, the, the project is, is, is stopped by the township board, right? So this opportunity came up. I felt that I would be remiss if I didn't bring the opportunity to the board for you guys to consider. Because the opportunity, opportunity comes and the opportunity goes. So if the opportunity comes up and you guys say, hey, no, thanks, I'm not interested, that's fine. You know, at least you guys got to make the decision. Whereas if I don't bring the opportunity in front of the board, and, you know, three months from now, you know, when they start, you know, designing the bridge project, I get questions from the board as to, you know, why weren't we asked about this opportunity? You know, that's egg on my face that I kept that on my desk and didn't bring it to, to guys to consider.
And I get that, but this was brought up at the Infrastructure Committee meeting in November, this exact same issue. So a heads up at any of the November, December, or January meetings would have been good instead of, you know, it's put on the agenda Friday, four days to decide. We, we didn't use the time that we had. The board didn't know about, I mean, to solicit feedback from the public. So now to be put in this position, the board could have egg on our face either way, and it's unnecessary. I just think it's really premature.
Question? Question from Manager Swayze. If we decide not to proceed, is there any chance that the Kent County Road Commission, when they're designing the bridge, could add a few feet?
So they're, yeah, so they're not actually replacing the bridge, you know? So that, that really is, is the best case scenario. I know if they were replacing the bridge, absolutely, we could design it with pedestrian crossing issues. So, but the feedback that we've received from M dot is the replacement of that bridge doesn't appear in anywhere in any of their long-term plans. So really, all they're doing is resurfacing the bridge as it currently exists.
This has been something that has been on the board agenda for four years. I, I was, I'll just state my own opinion. I was never for it in the first place because it seemed like a bridge going to nowhere, a pathway going to nowhere, as the Taylors and others have said, John and Timmy as well. We, we voted to approve the application to see if we could get the grant. And then we were going to decide after we got the grant what we're going to do with that money, if we were going to go forward. And from there, it grew to three million, and now it's back down again. I agree with what people have said tonight, that if we're going to put money into something, crossing the Thornapple on Cascade Road is an area that gets used a lot more, I think, by the residents of Cascade than the Burton Street Bridge does. The Burton Street Bridge, if you ever traveled Burton in the morning and, and have watched people try to cause it, is difficult. But there isn't a reason to go to the other side as much for our residents is residents from Kentwood coming into Cascade. I agree that it would be nice to have a pathway to the Y and Myers and other things. But I think in, in terms of priority and spending eight hundred thousand, we need to spend it on other projects rather than this one.
And we have Twenty-Eighth Street. There's a sidewalk there. It's not ideal, but it's quite close.
I, I agree with everything everybody said. I, I think the Taylors are right in terms of the paths need to be improved, and we want to keep those maintained. I agree that we'd, it would be good to have a, I mean, I think it'd be ideal, wonderful to have a bridge across the Thornapple River, Cascade Road. On the other hand, I remember fifty years ago when I visited Grand Rapids from college, and I went down Burton Street, and it was in the middle of nowhere. Burton Street was backwards. And I couldn't believe when Old Kent Bank built their facility for the, for their computer systems on, on East Paris, because it was in the middle of nowhere. Fast forward fifty years now, look how busy Burton Street is. And fifty years from now, it's going to be, who knows what it's going to be? So, you know, if we look out ten, twenty, thirty years, my only reason for thinking the bridge is a good idea is that the region, it's, there's a regional connection. There's a huge safety issue. I've watched people in the winter. There is no pedestrian sidewalk on that bridge at all, like there is on the Cascade Bridge over the Thornapple, albeit not a very good one, by the way. And I would much rather support also a bridge over the Thornapple River. On the other hand, we've got a one point three million dollar grant, we've got money from the state, and this is a once-in-a-fifty-year opportunity to connect a region. So I think from a long-term perspective, it's a good thing to do. From a short-term perspective, would I rather do other things? Absolutely. But I just looked down the road at the growth of West Michigan and what's happening. And at some point, there's an accident waiting to happen there, and there are connectivity issues. So I reluctantly think it's a, I think it's a good idea in the long run. I'd rather support, like I said, the bridge over the Thornapple River. And I still support improving our paths. We need to have that done. But to turn down a potential two million dollars, we're probably not going to get that opportunity over the, over the next thirty, forty, fifty years. So that's, looking at it from a longer perspective, is why I kind of begrudgingly think it's a, a good idea in the long run.
But why do you think that it wouldn't present itself for fifty years?
Because I haven't seen us get another grant for two million dollars for, in the last fifty years for a bridge, for bridges.
Have we tried?
Not that I know of.
Have we tried it for the Thornapple River Bridge?
No. Because it, because that, that wasn't on the radar screen when this one was. This has been on the radar screen for about ten years, particularly the last five years. And I believe it was the county who wrote the grant. We didn't write the grant. Is that correct, Ben?
That is correct.
Yeah, so, so the grant wasn't that we had to get involved and do, do our time for it, Grace, which we would for the Thornapple. And, and I think we would struggle to get a grant for that, but we would have to write it. This one was done for us by the county, so we didn't have to.
And why do they, wouldn't do that for other locations?
They might, they might for, for, because actually they control the, the bridge over Cascade Road. So they would be part of the process in writing any grants. So I think we would do it in combination with the, with the Road Commission, and it would only be to our benefit to do so.
Looking back historically, the township had the county modify the Camel Home Bridge to, to our request.
Yeah, I was, I led the citizens committee for that, had a thousand registered signatures.
Good job. I think that in the future, if we had a reasonable request, the county would work with us again, like what they did with Tom and the township on the Camel Home Bridge. Not only that, but Russia might control us, who knows?
And, and, and my support would only be if we, if we could absolutely cap that at 800,000. Because I agree, if we got unanticipated costs beyond that, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be for it. Because the original thing when we started this back in 2017 and 18 was that it was only going to be a maximum of 800,000 and then it ballooned.
And now this is a repeat. It's Groundhog Day.
Yeah, and, and we can say, no, and that's our prerogative.
Any other questions or discussion? Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion that we not move forward with the Burton pedestrian bridge at this point.
I'll second your motion. A motion support, a motion made by Trustee Kessel, supported by Trustee Nordhook to not proceed with the Burton Street Bridge project. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
So if you vote yes, you're denying.
Wait, timeout.
Correct.
Because of the way he worded his motion.
As long as you, yes. Trustee Nordhook.
That would be a yes.
Wait, what?
A yes to kill it.
A yes to kill it. Correct, correct.
Okay.
Trustee Kessel, what you could do is you could say, I, I make a motion to approve the Burton Street project so that people aren't confused and then we can.
No, I, I don't approve it. I moved to deny it.
Let, how about we word it, Trustee Kessel's motion to kill the project. So if you vote yes, you're in favor of killing the project and that would be supported by Trustee Nordhook. So Clerk Slater, please call the roll on who is in favor of killing the Burton Street Bridge project at this time.
Try me again, Sue.
Trustee Kessel?
Yes.
Trustee Shipley?
Yay, yes.
Supervisor Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
No.
Clerk Slater?
Yes.
Supervisor Luesbrunz?
Yes. The motion to kill the project carries, so it will not go on. Next item on the agenda, item 0132022. This is about a resolution to publish notice of intent to issue municipal securities for the fire station number one project. Manager Swayze and Attorney Homier?
Great, thanks. I can start. And then if you have any questions, they're probably best directed to Township Attorney. So at our January 26 Township Board meeting, so the Fire Department Design Team, Williams Architect and Triangle Construction presented the schematic design and initial estimated budget for fire station number one project. And at the meeting, the board authorized the design development phase of the project, which will ultimately bring us to construction documents and a final budgetary estimate that the Township Board will have to make a decision on regarding moving forward with the project in the form of letting bid documents. And we anticipate that to happen at a May 2022 meeting. So it's anticipated the Township Board will want to consider bonding for a portion of the cost of the, of the project. As part of the bonding process, the statutory bonding process, the board must authorize by resolution the publication of a notice of intent to issue bonds. So I want to make sure the board understands that the notice of intent does not obligate the Township Board to ultimately issue the bonds, nor does obligate the Township Board to bond for the entire amount noted in the resolution. So we drafted the resolution with the full initial budgetary amount included to allow the Township Board the greatest amount of latitude when designing what the final bond amount in term should be. So if it's approved by the Township Board, the notice will be published in the Grand Rapids Press in accordance with the relevant statutes and upon publication, that will begin the 45-day public writ of referendum period. So in your packet, I include the proposed resolution authorizing the publication of a notice of intent to issue municipal securities. As Supervisor Luesbrunz noted, the resolution does need to be updated to reflect today's meeting date, February 23rd. Also included the proposed notice to publish in the Grand Rapids Press and then included the January 26 presentation on the fire station number one project. So if the board wishes to consider bond financing for any of all of the reference projects, the notice of intent must be published as outlined in Public Act 34 of 2001. Again, publication does not obligate the township to issue the bonds. The board will have an opportunity to review financial analysis for the project once a financial advisor is procured. In addition, once the bids are received, the Township Board will have an opportunity to reject bids if certain performance thresholds are not met. So the publication of this notice will begin the 45-day referendum period. During this period, if the township receives a petition signed by not less than 10% of the registered electors of the township requesting a referendum on the issuance, the bonds can only be issued upon the approval of a bonding question on the next township general or special election. So if no petition is received, the Township Board may issue the bonds by a simple majority vote upon the expiration of the referendum period. So if the Township Board does choose to issue the bonds and accept bids, it is anticipated that the transactions will take place in summer. It's a fall of 2022. This will allow the township three years to complete the projects that were bonded for. So we'll note that the publication for the original notice of intent will cost the township about $500. Obviously, the project itself will cost a lot more, but we're just talking about the notice of intent right now. And again, further financial analysis on the bond issuance will be provided later in the process. And again, want to note that issuing the notice of intent does not obligate the Township Board to any further costs. With that, staff is making recommendation to approve the resolution to publish the notice of intent to issue municipal securities and to approve certain reimbursements.
Trustee Shipley?
Yeah, with all due respect to the legal beagle and Ben, you know, you guys know your work. I got to turn over here to Jim. Jim, does this make sense to you?
Yes, it does.
Thank you, Jim. That's all I have, thank you.
Ben, I have a question though. We don't, or Mike, either one, we don't have to state the term of the bond or whether there's prepayment or anything in this, right?
No.
That's all something.
That will ultimately come in the bond operating resolution.
And to leave it at 9.8 million, which I doubt we would have to bond for it, but we don't have the final bids back. So is that a firm number? Then we couldn't go over that?
Correct. So that's, and that's what Steve knew. We were pretty comfortable with that number.
Yeah, I, I don't think we'd have to bond for that much anyway. Okay, thank you.
I make a motion to approve the resolution to publish the notice of intent.
Show the support.
Some motion by Trustee McDonald, supported by Trustee Shipley to approve the resolution to publish notice of intent to issue municipal securities and to approve certain reimbursements for the fire station number one project. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Supervisor Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Trustee Kessel?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Clerk Slater?
Yes.
Supervisor Luesbrunz?
Yes. Motion carried. Article 10, we have no items for discussion tonight, so this will bring us to the next session or section for public comments. Are there any in person? Now is the time. And we're doing it now because we have a couple items that are, that will be discussed closed session. So rather than make people wait. Is there anyone virtually?
If any of our Zoom participants would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. If you are joining us via phone, please dial star nine. I'll wait a moment, Supervisor. Doesn't appear that anyone would like to comment. Okay.
That will conclude this portion of the public comments. Next?
I make a motion to go to closed session. Is that proper?
I believe so. Do we need to state the
The purpose?
The statutory basis?
Yes.
Okay, so this, there's two items to be discussed under closed session. First is pursuant to MCL 15.268H. This would be to discuss a legal opinion regarding land use issue and also interpreting local and state laws with regard to that land use issue. And then secondly, we also have the Township Manager's annual performance evaluation. And pursuant to MCL 15.268A, Manager Swayze has requested that this board conduct the evaluation in closed session. So based on those two legal bases, is there a motion?
Motion made again. Support.
That is a motion by Trustee Shipley, supported by Trustee Kessel to enter closed session based on the following, or based on the previously stated reasons.
Go home. Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Kessel?
Yes.
Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Supervisor Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Clerk Slater?
Yes.
Supervisor Luesbrunz?
Yes. Motion carried and we are now in closed session. Thanks, Saria.
Thanks, Sonia.
Which is good for us.
I make a motion back in our session.
Support.
Motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Kessel to return to open session. All in favor? All in favor, roll call please, clerks later.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Treasurer Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Slater, yes.
Supervisor Luesper.
Yes. Motion carried. We are now back in open session. Article 13, manager comments.
I have no comments tonight, thank you.
Article 14, anyone from the board?
Absolutely.
Trustee Shipley.
Thanks for staying here, folks. I know that you have various reasons to stay here. Some of you are professional chauffeur for some of us, but... And anybody out there in La La Land, thanks for singing to me.
Do we need to let Mr. Rizzi know what time we close the Wisner Center?
Just a quick comment. As of today, the election of taxes for the winter taxes was at 98%. The deputy treasurer, Jan, came up with a great idea of sending out notices to all those taxpayers who were delinquent. Let them know that they had until February 28th for the taxes returned over to the county, which I think was a great customer service for... My last comment was, I've heard Chris Taylor talk about this postcard for $500,000. I'd like to see where that was approved by the board.
That process.
I thought it was discussed, but I don't ever recall it being...
And we made it a policy?
No, it was just discussed. Yeah, I don't remember. I agree with you, Ken. I don't remember.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I was just going to ask if there was a PFAS update. We know how many people are doing what, when the pipes are going in, where the engineering's at, how many people have got our filters?
Yeah, yep. So we had a really good meeting with the public in this room. What was that, the first week of February? Yeah. Got a lot of good feedback. So they are working on the final, final design right now. So it was about 90% designed when that meeting was held. The city and the project engineers are hoping to let bids at the beginning of March, which would give, you know, bring bids back in the April timeframe. We're still looking at, you know, a late spring, early summer construction project. The issue will be the ability to get our piping supplies. So we're starting to hear in the industry that the supply chain is really messed up at this point. So, you know, that probably more than anything else, at least for phase one, is going to dictate when that project can start. So I believe all of the whole house filters are, the people that elected them are in now. I think the last number was 19. Starting to get the bottled water stuff finalized. So they should, everybody should have access to, start calling, tell again next week, so they can get that service in place. Everybody we've talked to actually has been pretty cordial about the whole thing. Amazed that they don't actually have to pay for the connection either. Most of them were just happy that water main was going in front of their house. We also have to explain to them two or three times that, you know, no, you don't have to pay for the connection to your house either. You know, that's happening as part of the project. Had actually a really good conversation with members of the church on Thorn Hills and Thorn Apple River Drive about wanting to... There was a miscommunication. They thought they weren't included in the project. And not only are they included in the project, but when they find out they didn't have to pay for anything, they were ecstatic. So overall, it seems to be, seems to be going pretty good. Next step from the board level will be, you know, looking at a groundwater use ordinance. Both our township attorney and our special counsel are on top of that. That whole process is contingent on how the conversations between Eagle and the airport go. So without getting into too many other details that I'm sure Mr. Van Ness would not want me to go into, that's kind of the crux of that, that process.
Thank you. Where are we on the forensic audit? It's been going on for months, and the field workers done months ago.
They come back into the office one more time about three weeks ago, just to get the final end of year data. But I haven't been in communication with anybody on the forensic audit.
And I called Mike Homier last week to ask about it and tell him we're ready anytime. And he said he was, hadn't gotten, had gotten, would get in touch with Plant Moran. And then he got back Friday and said, "We won't be able to have it this meeting, but should be the first meeting in March." Hopefully that is doable. I really haven't heard anything other than...
It took a long time.
That. Good follow-up. Any other comments or questions? Their motion?
Motion made to adjourn this meeting.
The motion by trustee Shipley, supported by treasurer Pierce, to adjourn. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
You thought I was going to say nay, didn't you?